August 20th, 2024 will now come to order. Rule call.
Councilor Rosie.
Here.
Councilor Coivin.
Here.
Councilor Purpich.
Here.
Councilor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor by Sullivan.
Here. Approval of agenda. Anybody have any changes or additions?
Mayor, I handed out an item that I would... Those were part of, uh, number seven. So if you want, maybe add a right number seven, I seven.
Oh, this is Hartland Business Systems. This is part of it from Max Gray?
Yes.
It's this one. Okay, we'll add two items to number seven. Any other changes or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I don't think we had a motion.
Oh, we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So move.
Should made by Lewis. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number F, consent agenda, approval of payroll, July 16th through 31st. So move. Motion made by Coivin. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Rosie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. New business. We have just eight items here. Item number one, consider changing city council meeting. Well, you remember why we changed it a couple of years ago to two o'clock? Because we've got huge projects going on. And that made it more convenient to deal with county, Mindott, IRRB, because their staff is working. It's business hours. So if we need any extra expertise or advice from them or meetings with the contractors, they all know that we do business in the afternoon and they could come make a presentation or if there's any changes and we could act on it quickly. Because we don't have those areas of expertise. You could never afford to retain them. And what do we got, Jackie? Out there $150 million worth of projects with Mindott and Progress Park Extension. And it makes it, to me, more efficient to have access to these people with the expertise. And if we need certain ones to come in, they're available because it's business hours. And once the projects are done, then it really doesn't matter. But for it to be convenient and a good use of time and we get to use the resources available for us from those agencies. Because there's probably going to be some change orders there as they start those projects. And it'd be nice then we can act fast. If they knew we're meeting in the afternoon, they come make a proposal, we can listen to it. And if that works, we can take action and keep things moving along because the disruption is going to be huge there. Next year. And that way, if you got the businesses with issues, they could come during the day like that and to meet with the appropriate agencies, hammer out a solution and then act on it. And we keep things moving.
See, but after you, after you explained it like that, I do kind of remember the two o'clock. That could have went either way. Two or five. But your point is well taken with me because I know it does happen. And maybe we stay at two and move it after we're done with the projects. I don't know.
My feelings exactly. If we can revisit this after our projects.
I think we should.
It don't matter after the project.
Well, and the best part about this is you explain it to the people out there why we moved it at two. It's not because Draw or the chief or Jackie or Al wanting that two o'clock. There's a reason we have it at two and that's because we can deal with everything that way. You know, people didn't really know why we moved it to do. They all had their suspicions and blah, blah, blah. But now you put it out there and that's why we're at two o'clock.
Well, you've got the contractor, you've got Mindott, St. Louis County, we've got our engineer. And if you need some expertise in environmental surveying, things like that, they've got all the resources.
I think, I think everybody would be happy if we could revisit this after everything's done.
Yeah, then it doesn't matter after that.
Do we need a motion to retain the two o'clock?
I also would like to end low input here. You know, next Tuesday, we have an informational get together. At the auditorium. I see a couple more of those coming along down the line. So if there is someone that has this congestion or needs to talk to one of us, we would be available at that time also. And we can reschedule, maybe.
Yeah, I, I, we'll have to tell the people now, next Tuesday, we're having our first one. So if you have anything, come on in. Because that's the only way we're going to know what bothers you or maybe some good ideas you might have that we're overlooking. That's what this is for. Hopefully, we can have a few of them.
People have to take the time investment in their community if they want to see things happen. Like that meeting is going to be strictly not sidelined by a bunch of other things.
Right.
It's focused on that. Because I got people asking me about a community garden.
And I think that's great if they want one. I don't know anything about one.
Or like the tennis courts now, they're getting excited. Pickleball court one. I don't care if that's what they want. And those are the things to bring up and those things we can do without jumping through a lot of hoops. And get those kinds of things done. And if there's bigger things, then we can set up an action plan, how we address it. But it's not a one meeting and leave. People are going to have to on a regular basis so we can keep moving forward.
Yeah, because you know it'll happen. You know, if we get a good showing the first time and a good showing the second time, we'll keep going with it. But if we get a good showing and then nobody, well, then we're not going to keep going with it. So come with your ideas.
Yeah, I mean, it's their town. You gotta try to make it better. And see, there's a lot of things that we can do without jumping through a bunch of hoops or getting anybody else involved other than the city.
Well, you thought up the gardening, you know, the pickleball. Like I says, I'm out at Ely Lake and there's lines just to get on a pickleball court.
Well, I had calls from people in the field township asking me that because they said it's full all the time. I says, personally, I don't care. If that's what they want there, then that's what'll be there.
Well, we also have the tennis courts behind EIG with grass growing through them. What would a cog, whatever it take us to clean that up and they could be pickleball air. You know, the court's there.
You want this stuff for people to use. That's why we left the tennis courts and the playground there. That kind of stuff. And, uh, and I think if they should take a part, it's what we do with this stuff. You know what I mean? Because I can't think of everything. Like you say, a lot of this stuff, it makes no difference if this is what they want.
Well, before I got on the council, I used to sit there, flap my gums. And I thought you people are all nuts up here. Until you become part of it, there's so much stuff we can't do.
Yeah.
You know, that the public doesn't realize. But bring your ideas and we'll see if we can do it and let you know. Because you have to have a meeting to have a meeting to have a meeting is what I learned.
You know, we've had some great, great supervisors within the city. We've had good police officers. We've had good administrators, good mayors, good council people. But I think what some people have to realize, since the 60s and 70s, there are a lot more restrictions and hoops to jump through.
Yes, true.
That as a city, we are actually handcuffed just a little bit. And I think people have to start realizing that in order for things to change, we need the cooperation of all kinds of authorities, whether it's the environment or the county or the state or whoever, the federal. You know, we have to jump through a lot of hoops just to even get noticed. So I hope they all keep that in mind and then going forward that we can have a little cooperation and succeed through community help.
Well, it was nice. The last meeting, you saw some excitement when we brought that up. And somebody wanted the time adjusted. Great. Because we want everybody there who can be there, you know, that's.
That's all I have to say.
I have a procedure that morning, but I should be able to make it.
Okay, we don't need to take any action then? Item two, proposed easement between City of Evlith and St. Louis County for highway purposes on track F. Registered land surveying number one of 48.
So first of all, I apologize. I should have included in there a copy of that registered land survey. But let me sort of describe it to you.
Well, this description is, you know, a map would have been just.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Yeah, that's what they have in there. So, so, and Alan will correct me if I'm incorrect. But if you go to the end of Progress Parkway, the east end is 1404 Progress Parkway, 1402 Progress Parkway. And there's a big speed hill, west. F, okay, is in that area. And that's part of the property that used to be part of VEDA that years ago got needed back to the city of Level and back to the city of Virginia on the Virginians. So this is the area that's the new Wolverine Way around the box.
Oh, gets what I thought. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I'll write a note and I'll put a copy of that surveying.
I was reading this, Jackie, and I'm, I'm sorry, but northwest corner, southwest corner, lot number survey line. I'm a.
First of all, I need a compass east and west. I don't know where people.
How about that in your office?
That's kind of what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure. There was no picture.
I knew it was up there somewhere.
Just draw it on a scrap of paper.
A bar napkin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions about the easement? If not, I'll call for a motion. Do we approve this?
So move.
Motion made by Purpich. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Coivin. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
In all fairness, Jackie, I think we do have a picture of this somewhere in the old minutes, but please.
I probably. Item three, resolution authorizing the City of Evlith to make application to and accept grant funds from IRRB revenue bonds issued for Minnesota laws 2024, chapter 127, Article 69, sections 15, 60 to 16.
So what is this?
Yes.
This is the mineral tax, also known as the mineral article. This is not state bonding money. This is a bond that's going to be sold by IRRB and be paid back with proceeds, future proceeds from mining tax. So this is for our two projects that we had submitted to our lobbyists and that they were moving through the legislative section. I believe they realized that there wasn't going to be a bonding bill. That's when Representative Lewis stepped up and created the mineral tax. So what this is going to allow us to do is make our official application IRRB and then we go sell the bonds unless we get our proceeds. The proceeds are for some improvements to the capital and also for the utilities on Progress Parkway from Highway 37 up to, not quite the new Progress Parkway. It, I'll just say 37 to Progress Parkway for the new business. So this is kind of jumping through the hoops like we have to do the lease on.
Yep. When does that money get released? October, Jackie, or something like that?
Yeah, I think it's not going to be until like December. They have a lot of paperwork to do. It's a big box.
No one has any questions? A call for a motion. Do we approve the resolution? Motion made by Lewis. We have a support. Support by Rosie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four, consider change order number three from Max Gray Construction in amount of $55,897.68. This is for the library?
So, okay, right. So the last meeting, I brought you an estimate of $33,000 to repair the library steps. And part of the library step repair is included in this official change order. Because in the whole contractor world, you have to give a change order in order for the contractor to bill us. It makes it more efficient. So as I cruised through all of these papers and scratched my head and saying, where did I put all about $33,000? I found it on one of the pieces of paper, but I need to tell you something. Part of the library step restoration is one of the numbers in there, $33,000. But the total cost of the restoration is like $38,000. 38,953. That includes the investigation that was done to drill a hole, get this down, go in the basement, look around, see what was holding those steps up. It also included those tall, large column bases that really aren't holding anything up, but are rather decorative. They needed some top pointing. The stairs needed to remove the carpet and the glue. And I guess that was quite a bit of time because that glued days forever. We repaired those column bases, repaired part of the steps before they put the coating over it. And then also the spare, really, that we aren't up yet, but we plan to go up next week.
I went up there this morning, or since I went by it this morning, and I looked and it really looks nice. Considering what they used to look like, I wish we could have taken a picture to show the public where it looked like versus now. It really looks nice and I think it's well worth the money. And my next question is, is there a certain time? Is there a warranty for so long or?
Oh, yes. So when the work is done, there's a year warranty. But my understanding from that coating, it is almost indestructible except for, I believe, some automotive fluids.
Which there shouldn't be any of it.
Correct, correct.
But no, I just want to say, usually I have a big problem for change orders.
Right. Well.
But they, they really did a good job.
There's more to this story. So on page one, it says current action in the middle. Page number one is all about the stairs. Number two is about geriatric, the correct wording. So some of the air conditioning units they put in have a dual function. They can also be a heat, what do you call it, Jerry? A heat pump?
Not really sure.
They can, they do. Have they had a heat pump? So we decided that there's some value in the shoulder seasons instead of turning the boiler on and crank her up to use those in those shoulder seasons where, you know, it gets really cold one day, we can crank the heat up instead of turning on the whole system. So that is the 2188. And then number three is an estimate. I have not committed to it. You look at the corners on the north side of the library, from wall to wall, covers the steps. It is getting in pretty poor shape. That has not been repaired since about, I'm going to say 18 years.
You're talking about the fascia all the way across with that, where the peak is and eagles are in the center.
So I said, well, why don't you give us a try to do the entire north side? That's what we all see, okay? And it's up to you whether you want to spend right now. That is $14,745.
Do you have it?
That's all metal, right?
Yes.
Probably do that before winter.
Yes.
But it'd be a shame not to have it done for everything we've put into that building.
Yeah, and, and I just believe that, again, when you have the people that are in town working on it, it beats us sometimes. To consider it, because going to hire a one, a contractor to do one or two little jobs, I will be here by the time they can come around the bench because we're so busy. But it's absolutely up to you.
Yeah, no. As a matter of fact, I was, I was just up there and took a good look at the steps. I think they look really well. And a lady, a little girl says, well, you know, you have to go around to the other side. I said, oh, no, don't worry about that. She says, I just came to look at the steps. And she says, yeah, the ladies said, oh, they really, really look nice. I says, yeah, and they did a lot of work here and we're going to take care of, I already told her, we're going to take care of that. She says, well, we should take care of this library.
I think it's a lot of use.
Yeah. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Certainly painting that and making it look better. And we have funds, so.
Well, that trim maintenance, that's every few years you gotta do that.
You gotta do it all the time.
Yeah.
So that's just. So that's change order double, double, zero, zero, three?
Yes.
Double, zero, three. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Call for a motion. Do we approve this change order?
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, support by Rosie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain tax forfeit property.
Oh, you've got a really.
These are two pigeon traps here, I'll tell you.
I, I find it very, very hard to believe that the AEOA and the IRRB want to get invested in something in those buildings that look like that.
So this was a program specifically by them, some pilot program, selected a few communities. We were selected, which I'm grateful to have some selected. So we're the middle person. We have to like take ownership and then flip it over to them with no cost on our, except for our client.
Can I ask you a question? Did we do this a while back down on Lincoln Ave? That house came out beautiful.
So that was a collaboration between the city and AEOA. It was Lincoln Avenue and then another place.
Yes.
Where they had some, I don't know, greater Minnesota housing funds and the city threw maybe $5,000 at each house. And you're right, those houses are beautiful.
I mean, I was inside that house. I took a tour when they got done with it. It was many years ago. And it's gorgeous. Craig Homel's sister lives.
It was on Monroe and one on 1117.
Yeah.
So this is their program that they want to try out. And again, we're the middle person, but in the end, we're one of the four cities that's been some kind of having some old folks put on the tatchels. Maybe those new folks.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not going to be on the hook for any of this.
No.
Plus they're gonna, plus they had, they do have, you know, their whole business plan basically is written out here. I don't know who it is, but there's going to be like seven to eight people working, you know?
It didn't dawn on me until right now because we were talking about it and they're pieces of crap. Get rid of them. Well, then it just hit me that throwing a Shelley's in down there, I walked through it before they did it and I walked through after it. It's gorgeous. I would change my mind and go for it.
I think, I think it's a, you know, I applaud them for making such a concerted effort to go into those homes. And if it comes out more power and if it doesn't, you know, we'll have some.
They just come down.
They just come down, I guess, but.
The cost of a new hole, you know, is skyrocketing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's why I like Habitat for Humanity because I like new. And they put up a new house and you really got pride when you get the new.
When they did that house down there, I was very skeptical. I says, you know, that house should just be down because it's falling down. And that's when I walked in there. There's no way this can be, and I'll be son of a gun. It's, the other house is one of the nicest houses down there.
Well, they have a lot of work on. I guess I don't have a problem with.
You guys want to take a chance on this one?
I like the part where it costs us nothing.
Well, and the word pilot, you know, maybe the idea's not going to work, but let's give it a try here.
At first I was against it, but now I'm more.
Also move, Mayor.
Yeah.
You made a motion, Joe?
I did it under my breath.
Joe supported it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, authorize hiring three firefighters.
Well, well, well. Three. You got us. That's great, I think.
Anybody have any questions or not? Then I'll call for a motion. Do we accept the resume recommendation? And hire these three firefighters. You make a joke?
Yep.
Support by Lewis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven, we've got two items here. Quote from Hartland Business Systems for door access controls and we have Max Gray Construction that goes along with that?
Yes. Now I have my friend, the chief desk, help with this. So.
What is this? Some kind of security door here?
It's, okay, so remember that you're replacing some of those outdated, what I mean, in the alley? There's three manual button for it.
Oh.
You buy the outlet button towards the front. But one of those doors, um, we need to change out so that when you're in the room and you're getting out, you just hit a crankshaft on it. And then also, we want to put the same fob system we have down here and there. And then also with the library, we have that wonderful enclosure. There's two doors that need to be fobbed. And all of these need to be wired and air cleaned. And it's above me, but it's not above Nesci. Really understands well. So what we did is Hartland has given us a quote, right? And they can come in and do the work that is on the Max Gray quote, but it'll cost them that much. Well, they have people who tells. So we decided that one of our construction needs, you know, maybe we should just parcel this work all together. So first of all, there's two separate things. So that's why now we have two separate items, okay? The Hartland, okay, and then the Max Gray. The Max Gray includes $1,400 to change out the exit on the one door. And the other part is all of the electrical, there's my technical board stuff, okay, and wiring that goes along with making these work. And maybe he's got something to say.
You did it for the control box.
Would these be the same doors like, remember I was talking about the fire hall back door? Would it be a door like that?
These are going to be doors to replace the old crappy doors, but they're going to have a fob on it. They're going to have a fob on it.
Okay, because I was looking at that one at the fire hall and now it's got to be replaced too. You can't get out of it.
Anybody else have any questions on these two items? You guys are moving back in the police station again now, eh? Not with the trailer light. Call for a motion. Do we approve the quote from Hartland Business Systems and Max Gray?
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, support by Coivin. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, resolution accepting donation from Evlith Women's Golf Club for golf course. That is the.
One from last week where they presented, we just have to, again, a rule that we have to, you have to accept the bylaw.
Motion made by Lewis. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'm just curious, where we're going to put this where it's safe? You know what I mean? Somebody doesn't come and steal it. That's.
It has to be brought in every night after they close or whatever to protect it. Because it is an expensive item and it's out in the middle of nowhere where Havoc does rule.
That's kind of was, was my thoughts, you know?
So it might be incorporated into their work.
Well, you know what? If they're on that fifth, if they're on the fifth tee off, they have that building there. And he's out there every day. You know, they put different stuff out there. Even our boys out there working can fly by with the lawnmower and pull it out and put it back up.
Just to mention something there, you want it out there until courses close. So our guys are gone long before that, you know? So you don't want to pull it off at two o'clock and then you have somebody have an episode out there after that. You know, because you got golfers out there till nine probably. So to get it in and out, I'm not sure.
Is the clubhouse open that long? Is there somebody in the clubhouse?
Yeah, there's somebody cooking in there or taking care of the clubhouse. As long as they're open, yeah.
Is it a possibility that they might have written into their contract duties as described in one is go get the D fin? I don't know if the logistics are behind.
We could discuss that, yeah. But I mean, if John isn't out there working, you know, he's our, he's our manager out there. You know, he has, he has temporary help out there, our type of people.
I think if you talk to John, John would do something. He's pretty good.
Let's hope that common sense and kindness prevails.
Yes.
And that nobody touches it.
What are they talking about putting up some sort of a structure to keep it protected and safe?
Yeah, well, there's a weatherproof.
Stand like.
Stand cabin, cabin structure. But it's not locked. Otherwise you can't get in.
There'd be no reason to steal it because there's no copper in it.
And the resale value insured mill, there's not a big market for it.
There's no copper wire in it, so.
But you know somebody would take it just to say they took it. And people would take it if there was copper wire.
It's not like we haven't had vandalism out at the golf cart before. So that, that's just an opportunity.
I mean, you get a great donation like that with great intent and that's somebody who'll do harm to it or not have it available.
Yeah.
That's, that's the part that bothers me. Well, I would feel sorry for anybody that damaged it because the first thing I would do is put them in front of the ladies that raised the money and then let them have it.
I don't think there'd be much left.
No, 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 no. They did a good job and somebody should respect.
I think it's fantastic that they offered.
Well, I think it's finance. That's an active place and it's in the middle of nowhere.
That's right. That's, well, that's all golf courses are. So that takes care of our new business. Council presentations and committee reports. Anybody got anything?
We're ahead of our meetings.
Yeah, we got one on tomorrow and then I got, we got one on Thursday.
Thursday.
Boom, boom. So next meeting we'll have a report.
Well, Joe and I have been trying to, the Virginia councilors trying to get the airport manager positions approved, the post and get that back on track. airport, manage the positions, approve the post and get that back on track.
Trying to get it going before it snows, yeah.
That's coming with alternatives to keep the runways clean and things like that, and that's been kind of challenging.
Interesting.
Yeah. You know, kind of dates yourself, and I'm thinking of back in the seventies when I started flying, I said, what can we do there? You're, you're kind of reverting back to some of that stuff.
Yeah.
The way you ran, we had a real good operator out there who could multitask very well. But that's about all I've got. Pete, what have you got?
Nothing, ma'am.
Don't you got that fancy office now all remodeled down there?
We're fully operational out of the PD now.
Are you gonna have a picture, Bustunder?
Slowly we can sub back in, but yeah.
Jerry?
I'm laughing about, you should have us too.
You got anything to add, Jerry?
Nothing else, ma'am, thank you.
Well, you got.
Just a quick, we did do a lock throughout the fail pond, there's just two items on the punch list and it looked like one of them is being wrapped up and I gotta check out the others, so it might be.
You can put us a ribbon on it.
Later this week, we'll see.
Perfect.
That's great.
There's one piece of property I think we'd like to have surveyed, remember I was telling you, where, huh, Fail Road and Park Avenue there, that corner?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Where Cory lives there?
Yep.
I'll talk to Alan.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting piece of property there. He wants to do a few things down there, so we should survey and see what we own and what's mighty company sliver there it looks like on that, so. Steph, you got anything to add? Counted all the votes?
Yeah, went quite smoothly, yes.
Jack, you got anything to add?
Thank you.
Mitch?
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Johnny?
I got something, everything nice. I have to commend the police department and the officers for the excellent support that they give the avenue service on calls. And the little explanation is, if we go to fail, they have first responders that are there to help us out. Same thing in Mac and in Clayton, they have resources out there. Virginia, they have a lot of guys at the hall, they make one radio call, they got instant help coming. In Edwith, we don't have first responders, we have three people, sometimes two, to handle situations. When the police come and assist, it enhances patient care and survivability and functions survival tremendously, and I can't thank them enough. This week, and this week alone, because I've been there for thirty-two hours, their help was immense, was, was.
That's good to hear.
I can't, I can't tell, the public don't know that they don't just chase the bad guys and write tickets. They are there supporting the public and making life better, easier and safer for everybody. So kudos to your guys, and you even showed up, I went, anyway. Oh, wait, so was Brian, we had all the grass, that one called, that was great. But yes, thank you very much, not only from me, but it's a sentiment of every person down there.
I will let our guys know.
Let them know.
What happened at the nursing room where we had all the vehicles, there was a fire alarm or something?
On the weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, yeah, it was small, never spoke very well.
It turned out that there was a, a water leak that hit electrical panel that caused a short circuit that made a haze and we err on the side of caution, so everybody out, you know, and they rectified the situation, everybody, and it worked out well.
Tell you what, you see, everybody came together, you had the highway patrol, all the neighboring communities, I mean.
You got a thirty-bed facility and they're with their firm people and there's danger, you gotta get them out and make aim. So people, once again, should, should know that their loved ones that are down there are well watched over. Boy, they do have top of the stuff, sorry.
Rich, you got anything to add?
No, nothing for me, nothing for me.
You know, I just had one question, because I, I know somebody who works out of the metro who works for a major petroleum company. Could the city have owned like a fuel facility that's pay at the pump and everybody could use it for diesel especially? And the city get into that venture? Because if we provide.
I don't think the city government could, I think, no, I don't think you could, you wouldn't be able to get into a private venture like.
Because they would put the tanks in the pump there.
Yeah.
In some, we had.
Sort of like that one by Independence, or you just sort of pull it and?
Yeah.
You got, just with the card?
Yeah, there's, there's no.
Nobody there, they're just.